Welcome, this is the May 4th, 2020 Alexandra County Board of Commissioners meeting. We're holding this on Zoom, it's 6:00 PM. Tonight, I call on Vice Chairman Larry Yoder to lead us in the invocation, and then Commissioner Jeff Peel will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would bow your heads. Commissioner Yoder there?
He's muted.
I'm sorry. I'll try the most gracious way for all of you to come if we decide and ask your blessings upon this community, upon our state, upon our nation, and upon the world. We'd ask you to send your blessings down to those who are sick and afflicted, to be with those first responders, those on the front lines of this pandemic, be with them and their families that they would receive the blessings of the Most High at this time and this critical stage of our country and our world. We'd ask you to be with those that have lost loved ones, to be with those who have been injured in accidents, be with our law enforcement, our military, and be with our leaders, be with our medical experts, the ones that know and have the knowledge to find some type of vaccine or medication that will help take care of this pandemic. We'd ask you to be with us as the leaders of this county, the leaders of the state, be with each and every one of them that they have the information that they need to make the decisions that they need to make that will help those that in our counties and in our states. We ask this in all in thy name, I mean.
Amen.
Would stand with me and let's pledge allegiance. Kitchen? Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioners report, is there anyone that would like to report on anything tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I attended the meeting, transportation meeting for this past week. It also was held on Zoom. Very strange to have all those folks on there. One of the most important things I think that came out of the meeting, of course, I think it started in the newspaper, the news bulletin was released, I think this morning. But the DOT is looking to be $300 million below budget this year and another 350 million next year. Those are the things that are affecting this area of the state and also the entire county, the entire state. And we, there was a couple of things that was talked about. One of the things, or the updates that we did, NC-16 modernization that passed. This is the second time it's been on there, so it'll continue to be on there. And a few other things, especially the thing with the modernization of NC-16 South from 64 to the Catawba River. That will be sure to entail the fix of the intersections that we have, Ospeau Down Road, the intersection at Millersville, and any other intersection. Once they're modernized, it'll take care of those traffic congestion and the things that need to be done in those areas to make the traffic flow more freely and to stop some congestion, especially the accidents that you have on 16 South and Ospeau and at Millersville. Those are some of the highlights that came out of that meeting. And then we had a, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners met Friday. It was an emergency meeting that was called, and that meeting was very informative. The information that most of you received from the association about contacting your legislators to talk to them to discuss this relief fund that they just passed and the governor approved it this morning. That's one of the things that was talked about quite a bit. And also the, talked about the six months for the driver's license and the registration of vehicles, with the six month delay in registration of vehicles. As most of you know, with our taxes, that affects our collection, and that could possibly lead to a six month delay in us receiving that revenue. However, we were still, we would get the revenue, it would just be delayed. But it's a good informative meeting and a lot of good things come out of it. And it was, you know, the counties all working together for the good of each and every county. So it's a very good meeting and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Yoder. Anyone else?
Chairman Mayberry, if I may, please ask Mr. Yoder a question about the transportation meeting. What's the status with the Liledown? The, any, any luck there?
I do know that they are still looking at that, and I'm hoping that they'll give us an answer probably within the next three to four weeks. I don't know what's going to happen with this $300 million shortfall. They are, they are, it's going to be a bridge that's going to be fixed in Alexander County, which is not Liledown, but the, I can't think of the name right now, I'll find it on my. But that bridge is because of its grant, and that grant was already left. That'll be the state bridge added to step due to, over Duck Creek. That bridge is going to be fixed, and that was a grant that came from the federal government in order to fix that bridge somewhere near, they didn't have a million dollars. And because the state got the grant to fix that bridge, then they're going to go ahead with it. The discussion on the Liledown Road, I think we should know something in about three to four weeks. I think there'll be an answer one way or the other, straight up or straight down. But I think we'll know something in three or four weeks from my understanding, because they did say May, and I'm hoping that they hold to that. That's what they've told me at every meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Yoder. Anyone else like to report on anything? Okay. We'll go on to adoption of the agenda. You've got the agenda before you, are there any, any comments or we have a motion to approve?
Add the proclamation.
Yes. Let's.
Make a motion that we add the proclamation requesting Governor Cooper to allow Alexander County businesses to reopen to our agenda.
You've got a motion. I'd like to add one thing to that motion or Commissioner Peel, can you add, add that to, or make that item 1A?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a recommendation that we add proclamation requesting Governor Cooper to allow Alexander County businesses to reopen as item number 1A.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, we'll still need to adopt the agenda, I guess. So do we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the additional?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the agenda with the amended motion.
Have a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number one on the agenda is public comment. I believe we did have a public comment that the clerk to the board will read. Go ahead, Jamie.
This is from Craig McLeod. He says, "Good evening, Board. This is now the third board meeting this year. The McLeod family beats the drum for all to hear. We again would like to reiterate again the urgent need for this county to enforce the codes and ordinances it has on the books on stocking of trash, garbage junk untagged and no inspection stickers on junk vehicles can be found on a number of lots of property owners on Ridley Ranch Road. I think we all, I think we all agree these are in short times right now, but it's for sure the county has the duties of this enforcement in a timely manner. The first email of many, including pictures, was sent to the county board and department heads back in September 2019. One returned email from Commissioner Mayberry states, "Mr. McLeod, this is a small county, these things take time. Well, I think we can all agree the small things or problems are easy to fix. So the question is, why is this so hard? Why see, what seems to be the problem? Just how much time is needed for a small fix? Well, Commissioners, you all boarded this ship and you all signed on for this cruise. Alexander County needs to be shipshape."
Okay. Thank you, clerk. And this starts. We'll go on to item number 1A on the agenda, and I guess I'll read that. If I can find it in my book. Just had it. Okay, somebody else is going to have to read it, I can't find it right this second.
I got it.
Okay, go ahead.
Proclamation requesting Governor Roy Cooper to allow Alexander County businesses to reopen. Whereas Alexander County, like many rural counties in North Carolina, has a low number of laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19 and has not experienced the same effect in the pandemic that the state's urban counties have. And whereas we will stay focused and vigilant to work with our local and state health officials to monitor COVID-19, adhere to restrictions and guidelines, and adjust to impacts from COVID-19 as needed. And whereas the current stay-at-home order and closure of businesses may have and will continue to create significant hardships on Alexander County citizens. And whereas as a rural county, we depend heavily on sales tax revenue generated mainly by small businesses, which make up a significant portion of our economic community. And whereas if the current business closures continue, Alexander County's economy will continue to decline. And whereas the longer the stay-at-home remains in effect, the longer it will take businesses, unemployed residents to financially recover. And whereas due to our rural population of approximately 38,000, it is achievable for our citizens to practice social distancing to prevent further community transmission. And whereas our citizens have listened and responded by practicing protective measures and adhering to Governor Cooper's executive orders as well as North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and CDC guidelines, now therefore being resolved that Alexander County Board of Commissioners requests for Governor Roy Cooper to allow Alexander County and other rural counties in North Carolina to reopen businesses in the state responsible making or taking into account social distancing and mass gathering restrictions, exercise of proper hygiene, along with increased testing capabilities and extensive contact tracing measures to prevent the continued spread of COVID-19. After this day, this fourth day of May 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel for reading that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this proclamation as written and send it to Governor Cooper, Governor Cooper immediately. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay. There being none, I'll just add that I did send a letter. I guess it was the week before last, maybe Friday, we did, I did send a letter. Guys had seen the letter and said, you know, it was fine with you, requesting that we, the counties, and Alexander County specifically, get to set its own rules and regulations as far as the COVID-19 epidemic. We, our EMS and health department and citizens have done a good job of containing this virus here, and I think that our people can continue to do that. So I have not received a response yet and still waiting for one to come in. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, none, motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Item number two on the agenda is Alexander County 2020 to 2021 Budget Message. Rick French, County Manager.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You have a copy of this, I hope it was in your, your pockets or your information. The proposed general fund budget for Alexander County for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 totals $42,892,442. There is no property tax increase in the proposed budget. There is no increase, there are no tax increases in fire district, will be increases for building inspections, zoning or fire inspections. Requests from county departments for the upcoming budget year totaled $45,962,100. The original budget for the 2019, 2020 totaled $41,983,958. And currently, our budget stands at $43,697,216. There was also no property tax increase last year. The recommended general fund budget for 2021 includes the following items that are a continuation of the existing expenses from the 1920 budget. And they are the 2.5% cost of living increase approved in January 2020. That totals $356,000 for a year, fiscal year. FICA tax increase for, for the 2.5% cost of living increase, $27,000. The fiscal year 2021 retirement expense increased due to higher contributions rates, rates set by the state, that's $155,000. Health insurance increase, which is about 3%, it was, is, the dollar amount is $231,840. Retiree health insurance increase is $54,573. And the school, Alexander County schools asked for $265,060 more. And I'll just make a note about this. As you all have received, there was a copy of a letter from Dr. Jennifer Hefner sent to us last week. The letter sent to the school board, request $7,65,060 for the upcoming fiscal year. The 2019, 2020 county allocation to the school system totaled $6,800,000. Last year, the budget committee talked to the school folks about looking at $7 million even or $200,000 increase, and they have asked for the 65, 60. In the letter, it states that we have transferred as many positions to state funding streams as possible. However, with the increases in healthcare and retirement costs for locally paid employees, an additional $65,060 will be needed to cover these increases. Similar to what we've talked about earlier for the county employees. And again, just highlighting those items one more time. The 2.5% cost of living adjustment, the COLA, was approved in January, went into effect during the fiscal year 2020. It is approximately $356,000. And then the FICA results in a $27,000 increase. Retirement contribution rates by the state is increasing to 9.04% to 10.24% for general employees, and from 9.7% to 10.84% for law enforcement officers. As noted above, these, the total increase is $155,000. The 3% increase for health insurance is $231,840, and retirees $54,573. There were a number, number of capital outlay items requested by county departments over $1.3 million. Capital outlay items that are included in the 2020, 2021 proposed budget have been placed in a contingency line items in each department. And I will say that those, those contingency line items, my recommendation is going to be that they set, they set in until January, and we review those, and we compare our revenue stream and see where we are. They'll be in their budgets, and this, this list is in your pocket, but I'll go over it. Last, this current year, we replaced light poles at East Park. We're planning on placing the light poles at Bethlehem Park, and that's $100,000. Replacing four DSS vehicles, that's $90,000. An ambulance box on a new chassis for EMS, that's $100,000. Replacing four vehicles and equipment, with equipment in the Sheriff's Department, $230,000. Replacing their vehicle in the Sheriff's Department, $57,500. Replacing the vehicle and emergency services, $56,000. Replacing a very old radio transmitter and 911, $25,000. Two items in IT major projects, and you have that in your pocket, those information. Lenny's mountain tower upgrade, $40,000, and an all-site disaster recovery node, $98,500. We also have cameras for CBCC, security cameras in both buildings, $20,000. And replacing a zero-turn mower in maintenance. There are no new employees, either full-time or part-time in the budget. There are no salary increases in travel and training and education are being held at the 2019, 2020 budget standards. I will add that there is two seasonal employees for elections, which they normally had employees during election time, and they'll have to do that. But other than that, there's no full or part-time or any kind of new employees in the, in the budget. So I just want to point those out in the general fund. Concerning water, the City of Hickory is proposing a 3.75% increase for the new budget year effective July 1st, 2020. This is subject to approval by the Hickory City Council as a component of their budget. And water connections were reduced from $1,143 to $541 in June of last year. County staff recommends this continue until June 30th of 2021 to give everyone a chance to make sure they can make those connections. New water connections must connect to the Alexander County Water Systems, System. We will not allow water connections to be purchased and hailed for future use. Water connection fee, water connection fees will increase back to the $1143 or the Hickory end right July 1st of 2021. Of course, that's something we'll consider with our next budget. The Bethlehem sewer extension project started in April 2020 and should be completed by the end of the new fiscal year or June 30th, 2021. Sewer rights and connection fees are recommended at the same, to remain the same, at the same level to see if Hickory for the upcoming budget year. As we all know, the 2021 budget will see the development, construction, completion of three substantial utility projects. The Alexander County Water Expansion Project, the Bethlehem Sewer Extension Project, the Stoney Point Elementary School Wastewater Project. All those will add economic development by adding hundreds of customers and increased development. The economic and revenue impact of the COVID-19 pandemic is both severe and uncertain. All primary county revenue sources will be impacted as a result of this extremely, of extremely reduced customer activity in the corresponding economic downturn. It is impossible to make solid predictions because there are so many unknown factors, including what types of fiscal support the federal and state government will provide. The, the Association of County Commissioners and NACO, the National Organization of Counties, have both recommended counties take a very conservative approach to budgeting this, this coming year. Our next step in the budget process would be, we would have our public hearing on May 18th at 6 o'clock, and I guess we'd do another Zoom meeting to do that. A few other things I just want to mention, in the budget, we had 14 employees requested. And we, again, the continuous capital outlay is in department budgets, the major capital is, but it's in contingency in the department. For example, in the Sheriff's Department, those vehicles are there, but they show in contingency. And I would recommend that we wait until January to look at these requests, and then the commissioners would, we would review the revenue and talk about it at that time. There's about, about a million dollars in all those items combined. So let's see, a couple of other things to mention, okay. We, one of the things we need to do tonight is discuss some of the budget items if you have questions, but decide a public hearing on May 18th. We also need to schedule a budget work session. I don't want, if you want to do that on Zoom, we can do that, but we need to schedule it before the public hearing. You can always do it after, but it makes it pretty short process. But we're recommending that we adopt a budget in June. This, later this week, we'll have the detailed books for you to pick up with all the fun numbers in it, which some of you really like to go through. And county departments will get their budgets on Wednesday or late Tuesday. All of you have picked up your departmental budget request. And again, what we've done is we've tried to recommend a very conservative budget. If you add those items I mentioned earlier, that totals more than the number, budget number we're recommending or I'm recommending, and it includes what the school is asking for. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about the budget at this time, or if you want to talk about any aspect of it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I would like for us to have a meeting before the next meeting to talk about the budget, if we could. Some questions there, certainly I appreciate the conservative approach. Some things in there that, that, you know, I'd like to talk about, but now may not be the time. But I certainly think a good budget session before a public hearing would, you know, put us on a position better, understand what's going on.
How would, how would it be, gentlemen, be if we had a public, if we had a work session for next Monday, the 11th? That would be a week from tonight, and at the same time, maybe it's going to be different doing it on Zoom. I'm assuming that's the way we would do this. That would be my, my suggestion.
I don't think I have a conflict, so I'm good. Anyone else want to do that?
I am looking right now at my calendar.
I'm good for that.
I'm good for that.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, that's good. Shouldn't take long, yeah.
No.
I think you're pretty good.
Oh, I'm good, you know. I think what Rick said there about the recommendation, everything about making sure that we keep it as flat and as conservative as we can until, you know, this is, it's not over yet. We got to see what the state's going to do, and they're talking about a 1.5 or better shortfall in their budget. So, you, you never know what they're going to do.
And while we may be reaching a point now of some relaxation, you know, there's a pretty good chance that we see this or worse in the fall.
Agreed. It's going to be interesting to see what they do with schools, you know. So that's going to be, what will they do to us on the county level? What will they do to the school system? So I bet there's going to be some things that we really have to come back and, and take a strong look at in January, I have to, you know, but. Uh, there may be some things that happen that, well, I I think that my personal opinion is I think we really have to maybe make some adjustments in January.
I think you're probably right. Uh, you guys will have to be making adjustments in January.
We'll make them in December.
Do it December, you know.
What time, what time on the eleventh are you thinking of?
It's six.
Okay, I think.
Network.
Okay, we'll schedule a short budget meeting on the eleventh at six P M then, what work session? Everybody give it that?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
And and Mr. Chairman, could we go ahead and approve the public hearing on the eighteenth so we can go ahead and average? Because we have to advertise that starting tomorrow, so we need a motion to advertise the eighteenth, May eighteenth at six o'clock. And we, I guess we do another, we do a Zoom public hearing.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty, we hold a. Uh, public hearing on the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one budget. Uh, we'll hold that at six P M, if I did not say that, that would be a public hearing and we'll do that on Zoom. Uh, make that informal motion, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. Mr. French, any, uh, anything you'd like to follow up with?
I just want to point out, I think one thing that. Uh, you gentlemen have done, which I think is a good investment in our county is approving the utility projects, you know, if you, right now, the actually the sewer project is already, Bethlehem Sewer Project has already started. The water project is is going, uh, very well. And we have more water and the sewer project's really in its early, early stages and we have others and we'll talk about that later in tonight. But I think those, um, investments in our county will 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 help us later. And I applaud you for supporting those efforts. So no, no, Mr. Chairman, I don't, but I think those those projects were long coming for the county and we're very excited about. Um, the impacts that will have, the positive impacts that will have on our county.
Infrastructure projects are always a good thing for, uh, our economic development.
Yes, they are.
Uh, we'll go on to item number three on the agenda, which is COVID, uh, COVID. I'm having problems today, COVID nineteen update. Uh, we have Leanne Wisnet, our Consolidated Human Services Director and Doug Gillespie, the Director of Public Services, along with, uh. Mr. French again, so. Uh, Ms. French, you go ahead and take the lead.
Well, go ahead and let Leanne start, Mr. Chairman.
Again, there.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you. Um, we actually have received our fifth positive COVID case today. It is linked with the outbreak at Tyson Foods in Wilkes County. Um, the individual is home doing well, was only sick about, felt bad only or symptomatic only three days. Um, the individual is quarantined with close family contacts. Um, and we're anticipating, um, seven days since he is, um, doing so much better, so, but we will continue to monitor symptoms. And there are currently ninety nine counties that have cases, there is, um, one county still holding out, I'm sure that county, I'm sure it's just a matter of time. Um, our state numbers are continuing to level. They're they're still increasing slightly depending on which day you're looking, but but not to the extent that they have. So our efforts are certainly working, we're certainly hoping that, um, Friday's report from the governor can, um, let us. Get back to increase at least enter phase one. Um, and we are currently working and actually started last week working with our businesses, daycares and other entities to prepare to reopen. Um, and getting a process and a plan in place so that they can mitigate those exposures and. Um, understand how to bring back their employees safely. The daycare facilities, you know, it's kind of that circle, you you have to have the daycares to to allow employees to go back to work, so. We're working diligently, um, I won't steal Doug's thunder, he's working diligently on so, on on areas that I'm not, I'm working on plans and cleaning and some of those phases. Doug's working on the P P E side, hat, getting personal protective equipment for them. Um, one note of interest is that the Centers for Disease Control has expanded their, um, list of signs. Of course, we had fever, shortness of breath, cough, chills, sore throat was not always there, but they have also added headache, muscle aches. And the newly discovered, which we talked about for several meetings, but they're making it official now. But the the newly discovered loss of taste and smell, we really are seeing that a lot of the cases that, um, actually have symptoms, that they do. Have a loss of taste and smell, so, um, but I feel very blessed, our community has done an excellent job staying in and following the recommendations. Um, and all five of those cases have not originated in Alexander County, all five came from somewhere else.
So what you're saying is that no one transmitted the COVID nineteen to another person in Alexander County. They picked it up somewhere outside of Alexander County and came back home, basically.
The majority from from work.
Yeah.
Several healthcare providers.
Uh, can I, healthcare providers, is that?
Yes, but the majority have been healthcare providers caring for clients, um, in other counties.
Uh, that's, that seems to be where a lot of the transmission is taking place. Um, let me ask you another question because I I don't know the answer to this. There seems to be, um, a lot of transmission happening in, um, food packing and meat plants, that sort of thing.
Yes.
I would think that that would be one of the cleanest and and least likely of the places that it would be transmitted. Is there a reason for that, do you know?
I think the reason is the pro- close proximity, you know, it's hard to to keep that distance, you know, a lot of their stations are are close, you know, and you're, um. It is clean, I don't think it's from not, you know, sanitizing the facility, I think it's just from people. Um, what we've seen is they take temperatures when the person, when the individual arrives to work, but they may develop symptoms during that shift. Um, and you know, with Tyson, they've had, it's been a very substantial outbreak. And the healthcare providers, you know, you're doing very close contact care, so that's kind of understandable. Our first case, um, was in a large gathering out of state before we really were looking for COVID, that was the very first and early on, so. All of ours are very understandable and, um, we've been very blessed because we've had no transmission between hat, close household contacts. So we are, we're we're thrilled about that. So it is preventable, you know, that hand washing, um, distancing, social distancing does work. But that's, uh, that's my prediction is it's that close proximity and such a large, you know, they employ large groups of people.
All right, thanks. Do you have anything else to add, Leanne, or should we go on to, uh, Doug Gillespie?
That's my, that's, that's all I have of interest tonight, unless you have more questions.
Anyone else have any questions? Um, I I do have another one quick question, so, um, there they seem to be ramping up testing in North Carolina. Um, are you seeing that here or is that mainly in other areas?
We we, here's a good example, last week, I think there was ten individuals tested in Alexander County. So, you know, our community is staying home and we're not seeing lots of people ill, so. Um, we do have tests at the Health Department and all of our medical providers have tests. Um, more than not, individuals are going to emergency rooms, uh. Urgent cares and their family doctors, so, um, we are waiting for more testing capabilities. I'm very anxious to get the, um, immunity antibody testing and we have not seen that yet, we're anxiously awaiting, so. I think that's still slowly in the works, but we've not seen lots of outcome yet. Hopefully in the next week or two, because when people, when we go into phase one and definitely by phase two, we need more. Testing capabilities and testing for antibodies to see, you know, how many of our community has been exposed. And many may, um, many that we're seeing aren't very sick, if sick at all, some, we've had some that were asymptomatic. Thank goodness, that's a good thing, we've we've had no deaths and no one hospitalized.
I think it's probably more widespread than we know and, uh, we'll find that out in the months to come, so.
I think it is too, and that's why that testing would be so beneficial.
Ms. Wilson, if if one more question, uh, I I keep hearing that until. Sixty seventy percent of the people are exposed, we'll continue to have a problem, so. What's, what best guess timeline on something like that, are we, is this going to be around for a year and a half, two years?
I do think we're going to see this for a long time, I'm hoping and I think, you know, a lot of, we don't know, we're just kind of, um, easing through the process. The fear is that we will see more cases when we open things back up. Hopefully that's the healthy people that are asymptomatic and we do have more people that become immune to it, but less deaths and hospitalizations. Um, our chronic disease individuals at risk is who I worry about and I think they're going to have to stay home a long time. And I am fearful, um, or hopeful for summertime that the temperatures will help us and then. Um, they are expecting and predicting a resurgence with flu season in the fall. And until we get a vaccine or treatment, we are going to be dealing with this, so, you know, that's, um. And I, I feel like that's at least the next year and a half or two years, I know that's not comforting, but that's probably realistic.
Um. I I think, I mean, I don't know what businesses have closed down other than, you know, some hair and nail places. Uh, it seems like everyone else is in essential business and they're open. Um, so. I think that most business owners are responsible and that they can handle, uh, the things that they need to do and so can the citizens. Um, handle the things that they need to do to limit the spread of this, um. And that's why that we voted on the resolution saying that, you know, in Alexander County, we've got responsible citizens, we can handle, uh, being open. So where, um. I guess where where do you see, yeah, I know you said this is going to be around for some time, but, um. Where do you see us in the fall, six months from now? I mean, surely we've got everything back open, but probably the regulations that we're kind of under as far as social distancing and. You know, limiting the number of people in a place, you think that's going to still be around?
I do, and I, I totally support your resolution because, you know, we we've got to get our economy back and. Um, we've got to get herd immunity or or we're all going to continue to be susceptible, I mean, until we get immunity. Nothing changes, so I do think the, what we're learning is increasing our capacity to respond. I think, you know, tracing contacts and doing testing to know, you know, who has immunity and who has not. And I do think we will continue to see, um, hand washing, you know, we've, I preached that for the thirty years I've been in public health and that is one of the number one. Um, protectors for any viruses and illnesses, so, you know, hand washing is always going to be needed. Um, distancing, yes, I think even when we open back, our employers and businesses have done a great job. They're putting processes in place, so if somebody is positive, you know, how do we contain that and not expose the rest of their staff? So we're working on that so that, you know, we have one case in a plant and not, you know, a hundred and, you know, cleaning processes. Um, so I do think we'll continue to to do what we're doing, you know, our restaurants, when they open, it may be every other table to give us some distance. Um, just just being smart and and people staying home, you know, when you start feeling ill. You know, take your temperature, get home, don't take the chance, don't come to work or school sick. And hopefully people will do a better job at that, because I know, um, you know, we tend to, I'm a workaholic, I tend to not want to stay home sick either, so. But with COVID, we need to, if we've got fever, stay home. If we start not feeling well at work, we need to go get our temperature checked. Um, and and if in doubt, go home till we see what it is, it may just be, you know, a migraine or a headache, but it may develop into more, so. Um, I do think there's a lot of things we can continue to do to heal the process.
All right, thank you, Leanne.
I got just one question, uh, Ms. Wilson. I know you said, I think in our last meeting, that the flu, the numbers were all being just counted the same. Is the COVID numbers being broken out or are they just still all kind of in together with other things?
No, I think the COVID numbers are being tracked well, they're still working on, you know, um, processes, there's been some changes. I think maybe what we talked about was that they had changed our processes a few times. Um, but they've had time now, they've got some good plans, we, um, public health has always done tracking and case identification, so that's nothing different, that's nothing we haven't done. Um, they took some of that process away when we didn't want them to, but we're back to doing contact tracing like public health always has. And that is giving us better, solid numbers, like for instance, the new case that we have that's linked with Tyson. It is coming to our county as a number, I know people are concerned that we've not started back over counting, but this year. We will continue those counts, so we won't ever, or at least for twenty twenty, we won't start back with one for COVID cases. And and I'm not sure when they'll start that over, my guess is twenty twenty one will start new numbers. But that case, we are linking that back to Wilkes County so that we really do have a good picture of. Um, the disease spread and where it came from, so, so we do have some excellent processes in place. And we feel like our public health is able to manage, you may have heard a lot on the news about. Um, contracting for more public health help and we've looked at our numbers and done worst case, best case. Um, we feel like our staff's capable of handling it and, you know, uh, counties that are going to need the help are like Wake and Mecklenburg and those large counties. Um, I hope I don't eat those words and and we blow up and it goes crazy, I probably shouldn't have said that, but, um. But from our statistics, we, you know, we're prepared, we have staff, um, they do an excellent job.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, um, we'll move on to Doug Gillespie. Um, Doug, are you there, he is the, uh, our Director of Public Services?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, uh, we're going to start off a little bit with EMS. Over the last couple of weeks, we have seen a sort of uptake in the call volume that we've had over the last couple of years and I've looked at the data from last year, the last couple of months. Uh, to see that little bit of an uptake of us going out on the calls and getting the patients to the hospitals and stuff. When we look at the EM aspect and the Fire Marshal's aspect, we're doing everything that that we can do to get the supplies in as needed. Uh, I just did some some real quick figuring earlier today and right now we have given over. Uh, about eight thousand surgical masks throughout Alexander County and Alexander County only, we look at hospice. We look at the Health Department, we gave some to the Health Department, we have DSS, we have some of the county offices. Uh, we also have, uh, Home Healthcare's, uh, Medie Home, Valley Nursing Center, Tyler's Well House, still doing some fit testing, it's it's numbers have dwindled, I think we sort of knocked them out, we've still got a few more that we've got to take care of it for the N ninety five mask. Uh, EMS did get a a, a part of the Care's Relief Fund, uh, the other day for for help with us on preparedness and. Other stuff for the COVID nineteen that we're we're putting in process right now with funds, uh, to help get some stuff. Uh, other than that, one of the biggest things we're having right now, hand sanitizer is hard to find. Uh, you can find some, but if you do, it's 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 usually, you can only buy one bottle or two bottles, so. Me and my wife went to Walmart the other day to do our normal grocery shopping, she bought a bottle, I bought a bottle, so we brought them back to the office that way. Uh, we also look at, uh, uh, we just got a, uh. Package of thermometers that the, uh, no touch thermometers and that we ordered them a month and. package of thermometers that, the, uh, no-touch thermometers, and that we ordered them a month and a half ago. So we are seeing it slowly show up. Uh, North Carolina EM has done a good job with getting us the equipment and the supplies that we need. Right now, I still think we are acceptable with our personal protective equipment. We're working with everybody. Uh, as long as it, it, it doesn't last too long, uh, but North Carolina EM is actually working good with us. We also went out with the county and helped, uh, sort of set up some policies on how people were seen and how to handle things. And one of the biggest things, and I know Leanne's harped on this, is, is wash your hands. Uh, try not to use the hand sanitizer all the time, because that's gonna, can possibly do damage to your skin, but wash your hands. And then if you have to use some hand sanitizer after you're dealing with somebody. Uh, and that's basically about all that I have, if you have any questions.
Okay. Um, actually, I'm gonna put David Eisenhower on the spot here. So I know you weren't expecting to be into this, uh, update here, but, uh, uh, David, the, uh, what, what Doug Gillespie was just talking about was the uh, personal protective equipment, the PPE. We're gonna have, I think, uh, what's gonna be a mass exodus from China on a lot of our supply chain. Is, is there any talk at the state level about, you know, I know we're in, we're in, uh, terrible times right now, and there's no looking at this really, but, um, in, in the months and years to come, there's gonna be a lot of businesses gonna be moving from China back to the United States, I believe, anyway.
Yeah, I think they're getting prepared for that.
Have you heard any?
Possibility, yeah, I've heard, I've heard talk about, you know, trying to get prepared for that eventuality. It really comes back, though, to the same thing that you look at in economic development at any time, is do you have the sites and do you have buildings available for them? So that's gonna be something that's gonna continue to put more pressure on us if that happens. Where would we put them, and where would we get the employees to fill uh, the companies is another concern that I have. But I think in the long term, it could be something that could be beneficial um, for the US in general. Uh, and I think there's also, you touched on, you touched on the issue of supply chain, and that's, that's something else that's, that's a big concern is as companies start to go back work, it's not just that the employees can get back to work, which they can, but are they getting the orders and can they fulfill orders because of their supply chain? So that's a a big discussion on the state level as well right now.
Uh, a lot of the, um, uh, a lot of the raw materials come from China, especially for electronics, uh, rare earth metals, uh, I'm not gonna go into all that, but, um, we've got to move some of our supply chain back to the United States away from China. Um, another reason for us to, um, build a new building at the industrial park. That needs, that needs to happen here in the next year or so. I know, I know I'm, uh, going beyond where we need to be right now, but I'm always trying to think. Um, I'm sorry, Doug, and we'll go back to you. Um, so you feel like you're getting a better, um, handling, getting personal protective equipment right now?
Yeah, we're just getting what we've ordered a few months ago, or a month, month and a half ago, and we're getting that supply. The, the state's been working real with us, real well with us on the surgical masks and stuff, where we were probably getting two or three boxes. Sure Tape was nice enough to donate. We did have some stuff, if you've seen in the paper, from, uh, Duke Energy donated some stuff, some N ninety-five masks. The surgical mask is what we're looking at right now, because, and I think Leanne can back me up, the CDC, even for my guys, are saying, put a mask, surgical mask on the patient, and we put a surgical mask on ourselves, and we're considered, considered low risk of communicating that disease to each other. Uh, the only time that you want to see the N ninety-fives used is during what they call aerosol uh, procedures such as your breathing treatments and stuff like that. Uh, so I think we're, we're, we got a pretty good handle on it. Like I said, if this goes five years, uh, I don't think nobody's gonna have a good handle. If it goes, probably six more months, which I think it will, I think we'll still have a good handle on it and everything.
You may, uh, anyone else have any questions? Um, Mr. French, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, Rocky Face Park opened May the first, which was, uh, Friday, to the public without, with some restrictions. Uh, we don't have rock, there's no rock climbing, bathrooms are closed, the shelters closed. No camping, those kinds of things. Uh, we're open from eight to six. Uh, I talked with Alicia earlier today, and she reported we had about a hundred people there yesterday hiking the trails, which is the main thing people like to do at Rocky Face. Also, the, our tag office opened today, and we restricted a number of people that would come inside the building at a time, but just a few, and that's working out so far, so good. We're encouraging them to be six feet apart, and we've added shields, uh, in front of the, um, employees. Uh, again, the county offices have remained closed, but most, most of the employees are back at work. The, are probably our last area that we'll have to tackle at some point will be the senior center, but I think that's still a ways out. But again, just Rocky Face is open now, and the tag office, which is two things we talked about last, uh, last time. So, any questions for me?
No, but I'd like to put a plug in here real quick, since, uh, Mr. Eisenhower spoke a moment ago. Uh, we have had one manufacturer to do some major um, permanent job layoffs, and I know that, uh, like, uh, Mr. Eisenhower said a moment ago, uh, worried about finding the workforce for certain items. Uh, do know that we did have, uh, other manufacturers and entities in the county that we visited and attended over the last twelve months that needs additional workforce. So I just want to put that plug out there. Hopefully that some of these folks are listening and, uh, would inquire with EDC or whoever on who these entities might be in the county. Because I'm sure, uh, well, actually, I've heard that a couple of our manufacturers have continued to take orders through the COVID nineteen shutdown, and they're just sitting and waiting anxious to get back to work to, uh, provide, uh, the products to these folks. Yeah, that's, uh, very true. Uh, anyone else like to add any additional comments, questions? Okay. We'll go on to, uh, item number four on the agenda, which is the National EMS Week Proclamation. Uh, calling Doug Gillespie, our Director of Public Services.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just, just coming up, May seventeenth through May twenty-third, like to see if we can get proclamation for National EMS Week, and I'll just read it. I think you should have a copy. Uh, whereas emergency medical service is a public, or vital public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improved with the survival and recovery rate of those experiencing sudden illness and/or injury, and whereas the Emergency Medical Service System consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service Team, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it's appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services Providers by Designated Emergency Medical Service Week, and it states now, therefore, I, Mr. Ryan Mayberry, Chairman of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, Tyler's Well, North Carolina, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty, as Emergency Medical Service Week, with the theme EMS Strong Is Ready Today and Preparing for Tomorrow. I encourage the community to observe this week with their appropriate programs and ceremonies, and it's adopted this fourth day of May twentieth, or May, uh, twenty twenty, and signature by Mr. Mayberry and Ms. Starnes.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Um, I, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, National EMS Week Proclamation as stated, and, um, I'll just add that, uh, um, that's, you know, it's, it's so important that we thank all these people out there. Um, no matter what position they're in or what they're doing, uh, this proclamation means a lot. It means more today than it, you know, ever has before. So we appreciate all that you guys do. And, um, just like, uh, Leanne Wilson said, the, uh, the, the healthcare professionals and, and the emergency medical people, they're the ones on the front lines and really risking themselves. So we do appreciate all that you do. Uh, got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to, uh, item number five on the agenda, request for waiver of late fees on business personal property, and I'll call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we discussed that, this a little bit la- at our last meeting. What we're asking commissioners to consider tonight is, uh, requesting the waiver uh, for, of late fees on personal business property, let us, personal pro- business, personal property, sorry, and be able to bring those back to you, um, that you can consider them as part of, of your consent agenda at a, at a future, maybe at one of our later May meetings, maybe the eighteenth, that you will try to bring them back to you. But just want you to be aware, um, due to the filing period being changed and some other things, uh, related to COVID, um, to allow us a little bit of flexibility here, if we could bring those back to you, then. Is that okay with everyone?
It's fine with me.
Fine with me. Sounds good.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay. All right.
Okay, uh, uh, then we'll go on to item number six on the agenda, which is the Alexander County Courthouse, uh, cannot talk tonight, Alexander Courthouse Park Master Plan. Call David Eisenhower, the EDC Director, I'm gonna step away to get something to drop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think all of you have a copy of the proposed master plan. I'm also gonna try to, uh, share my screen with you. I think that might be a little bit easier if we take a look at this. I'm not gonna go through all twenty-four pages of the document, but there are some pages that I want to draw your attention to. So, can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
So, one of the first places I'm gonna stop in this document is on the acknowledgements page, and I just want to point out that we gave special appreciation to the Taylor's Rotary Club for their diligence and their patience as we worked through this process. They have certainly been a, a champion, I think you would say, for development of the park, especially the element that they're most interested in is, is the state. We wanted to, uh, express appreciation for their efforts. The project overview page is really just a, a quick description of the project and to point out the importance of the proposed master plan in a future Parks and Recreation Trust Fund application, if you so choose to go that route. And we tried to develop elements that are not available in Alexander County as we go through this. The other section, section two, site analysis is fairly self-explanatory. It really just talks about the site as it is and what was there, which was the previous buildings that were on-site. Coming with the property, topography, soils, et cetera, we're very lucky that this site is flat, which is unusual when you're developing a project in this county. So we're basically starting with a blank slate, thanks to what the board has done in the past, and first of all, removing those old existing buildings on the site, and then grading and planting grass on the prop- property. Of course, we don't have to worry too much about flooding on this site either, so, um, that's a good thing as well. Going on to section three on community input, it is one of the, uh, more important parts of the plan and very important for the possibility of a part of grant application. We were fortunate that before COVID nineteen came along, we were able to make a couple of in-person presentations of the proposed plan. I made a presentation to the Taylor's Business Association, and Rick and I both attended the Taylor's Rotary Club meeting where we presented, uh, the proposed plan to these groups, and overall, it was a very positive experience at both of those meetings. They were very supportive of the plan. I had a letter of support from the Taylor's Business Association, and have been told that the Taylor's Rotary Club is going to provide a letter of support, again, in the event that we're chooses to apply for a Parks and Recreation Trust funding grant. We had a community meeting scheduled, but, uh, as noted, COVID nineteen put an end to the in-person meeting, but since we had posted the information on Facebook, we were able to capture the fact that we had indeed scheduled a, an in-person public meeting, and we captured the comments on Facebook, which were by and large, again, very positive. There were a couple that were not so positive, but we left them in. Most people, most of the comments were very pro splash pad, and I think there's a lot of excitement building in the community about that aspect of the park. And of course, the stage itself is going a very important thing for the community at large. In terms of the final master plan, there's always variations to these kind of things, but really, we weren't too far off from where we've started to where we ended up in this, uh, plan. I want to go to our final kind of version of the plan, and I'll see if I can zoom in on a little bit and just walk you through the elements real quickly. Of course, First Street there is the courthouse side, Second Street is the services building side. The plan retains the large grassed area. Of course, it'll be regraded, re-sown. The park includes a lot of concrete sidewalks, kind of weaving through the park, which in essence lead to the two major elements in the park, which are the splash pad there represented and the the stage which faces the open lawn area adjacent to the splash pad. You can also see the playground and then the shelter. And of course, those were put adjacent to the splash pad to keep, especially the shelters, so that parents can keep a a close eye on their children while they're using either one of those facilities. The, the one change, or there's actually two kind of alterations to this particular plan that we made due to cost issues. You see the, both the entry and the area in front of the stage uh, kind of herringbone brick patterns in them. So we took those out because of cost issues, excuse me. We replaced the, with this board of concrete, which saved a good amount of money. Unfortunately, we had to take out the trellis at this point and the swings, but those can come along at a later stage. I think would be a, a nice addition to the park. Again, we have the open game fields, which are BYOG, Bring Your Own Game, but they're designated elements as far as a part of grant goes. Now, if there are any questions about the particular plan, I'll stop right here for a minute, and then we'll move to the, uh, to the cost estimate, unless you have any questions.
David?
Yes, sir.
With the, uh, Freedom Monuments, have, have we been in touch with those people? I mean, that was a long time ago, and we talked to them.
Yeah, we still had some, uh, communications from them. They were actually interested in getting started immediately, but, you know, we can't really do that until we get the site graded and ready for them.
Do they still go with us?
Yes, they're still good to go. Yes, sir.
Uh, Jeff, we talked with them the first of April. They're still ready to go about any time.
Okay, good deal.
Yeah, I think it looked, it, a lot of good things for the county, yeah, will be from there, and our people have been wanting some things to do, and like I said, I was on the board when we tore those buildings down, so uh, it's not an ask, or good things are coming there, so I think it looks good.
We'll move to the, uh, the budget estimate, which is the most, and some of these is most important. You can see the various line- You can see the various line items and, and the cost associated with them. And these were developed by McGill Engineering, who has had experience in constructing these types of elements in different places in North Carolina and others, other sites. So looking down that list, I won't read all the numbers, but the total cost to build is seven hundred thousand and thirty-five dollars. To that, you add the contingency and the cost for planning and construction administration. So you come up with a total project cost of eight hundred thirty-three thousand and thirty-seven dollars. Been talking with um part of, of course, part of is a fifty-fifty match, as you know, but rather than split it exactly fifty percent down the middle, I, I have included a potential part of grant request of four hundred thousand, which leaves the county match of four hundred thirty-three thousand and thirty-seven dollars. If you would choose to apply for a part of, you would need to approve this master plan tonight and then we would come back to you at the eighteenth meeting for the official approval of a part of grant. And if you approve this plan tonight, also, I, I would go back to the uh community input element of this. Of course, if you approve it tonight, we will post this uh plan on Facebook and other social media outlets. And I would encourage the public to, to weigh in on their feelings about this plan between now and uh the next meeting. Again, should you choose to apply for part of, we pretty much have it about ready to go. The deadline for the part of application is the end of May. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will stop and attempt to answer any further questions you have.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll say this, this is gonna be a great thing for the citizens of Alexander County. Um, this is, this is a, something that will really help uh revitalize Taylorsville as well. So uh, it's an Alexander County project. But it's something that benefits all the, all the citizens of the county. Um, and Taylorsville, Taylorsville is gonna um reap a lot of benefits from this as well. So that's a great project. It looks great. It's gonna be something that's gonna be used. You just can't imagine right now, all the uh programs and concerts and other just different events that are gonna be held on this property over the years. So it's gonna be a great thing. Um, you know, we appreciate all the input uh from the citizens and um, you know, um, everyone that's worked on this. So anyone else got any comments?
I do. I think it will be a tremendous asset and a focal point for the center of the, the county uh in Taylorsville. Also, on the numbers that uh McMillan, or McGill, I mean, I think it is, that um came up with the splash pad. I'm actually surprised the splash pad part does not cost maybe twice the amount uh showed on the spreadsheet there. Do we happen to know the actual size of the splash pad by chance, David?
Uh, off the top of my head, I, I guess, I'm trying to recall, I, I believe it's between twenty and forty feet in diameter. The real, real issue with cost on the splash pad is what type of uh splash pad do you have? This particular one is priced, it's a flow-through system, which means water comes and just drains into the uh waste treatment facility. So a, a recirculating splash pad is basically a swimming pool, requires water treatment, requires someone to, that knows how to treat the water and would be about twice as expensive to have a recirculating system.
That's, that's probably what I'm familiar with.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, David, can you show the plan again? The restrooms, future restroom, that's the depot building, that's not included in the plan. We'll certainly have to address those. We're gonna address those after we, if we get to grant. Um, our plan would be the restrooms would be in that building. We would use that building for a, a restroom building. So I just wanna point that out. That's not part of the plan.
Yeah, that building, uh, if you haven't seen it, it looks great. So uh, went from an ice store to something that uh really um is a wonderful piece of art in Taylorsville.
Well, I, I think both of the, the murals that are there now are fantastic, pre-addition to a future park.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the um Courthouse Park Master Plan, um, as in. Got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll go on to item number seven on the agenda, which is our budget ordinance amendments, numbers uh fifty-four through fifty-six. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number Fifty-four is to budget for consultants' planning services in the preparation of a park master planning document for the proposed courthouse park and the consultant's assistance with a part of grant application for the park. That's number fifty-four. Number five is to adjust revenue line items up or down based on revised projections for the remainder of the budget year. The miscellaneous revenue is from amounts written off by medical providers related to the six thirty-nineteen estimated liability for inmate medical bills with Medicaid eligibility questions. Contingency line items are used to keep the budget in balance. And number fifty-six is um is the budget to uh foreclose out of the Alexander County Industrial Shell Building Project and transfer the remaining cash balance back to the general fund. The funds to be returned to the general fund are from Article forty-four uh sales tax, which can be used for economic development, public, public education and community colleges. The transfer to the general fund will take place during the twenty twenty-one budget year. And I think that's the budget amendments we have for the mic. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, on item, our budget ordinance amendment number fifty-six, uh, I'm gonna vote in favor of that, but I just want to uh say that um we, we need a industrial shell building and that's gonna be more evident than ever uh in the next year or two. We're, we're gonna get left behind if we don't uh recruit some of these businesses that are gonna be coming back from China to, to Al, County. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve budget fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six as stated.
Second?
Or second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, item number eight on the agenda, other business county manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we had our uh pre-construction meeting for the Stoney Point Elementary School Wastewater Project. Uh, Wes Consultants is the engineer for the project. The project uh will start in, start this month. Uh, the Bethlehem Sewer Project has just, has start, actually started last week. Big Brothers Utilities uh is the contractor and Shavel Dean and McKimmick Creed are the engineers. Uh, wanna mention that the Consolidated Human Services Board will meet on May eighteenth. Our public hearing for our budget will be May eighteenth. And we'll, we're setting up a work session as we talked about. One item that you, all you gentlemen received uh information about was from the association, was about some funds that are gonna be made available to counties. There's two bills have been passed by the General Assembly on Saturday. They were sent a bill seven oh four and House Bill ten forty-three. And that was one point five billion COVID nineteen. Um, a lot of information in those bills. The expenses, the funds that are, will be given to counties is for COVID nineteen expenses. Uh, and we'll give you more information about that, but that just happened on Saturday. And I know all of you have, have been provided a copy, so I just wanna make you aware of that. Except for those things, Mr. Chairman, I have a few things for closed session. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I say one thing? I, I forgot during the commissioner's report. But this week is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. And I'd just like to thank all of our teachers and school folks who have been doing some amazing things out there as well that oftentimes people don't know or realize. But uh, thank you to all those who've been doing things oftentimes behind the scenes or behind the camera, uh delivering education services to our kids during these crazy times.
Absolutely. And not just behind the camera. They're in front of the camera now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Uh, do we have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, we are going to go into, to a closed session per North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen, point eleven, A, four, five, and six, uh, for economic development, contractual, and personnel issues. Uh, we will reconvene uh for sole purpose of adjournment. Uh, I'll make that in form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are now in closed session.